Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the August 21st meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. If you would please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask if there are Commissioner comments. Start at the end.
Yes, sir.
No proclamation?
Yeah, no proclamation.
It just seems odd. We might write the Commissioner comments.
Thank God.
I wasn't ready. Case date has started, so just be careful as students are still navigating the streets and our roundabouts and one-ways and all kinds of good stuff going on out there. If you ever want to watch or wanted to read a law board packet, now you can. The law board has, RCPD is live streaming their meetings, and if you want access to any of the packets for law board, you have to go to the website and you can sign onto it and you will get automatic notification for law board packets. So just wanted to give everybody an update on that. There was a lot of community members in the rural areas that felt they didn't have access and they didn't know where to go for it, and it was more difficult than it should be. So this should be an easy process for anybody that wants to take advantage of it. Earlier this afternoon, we had an intergovernmental support agreement signing event with Fort Riley, and it had to do with the Army Garrison at Fort Riley, a memorandum of agreement with the city of Manhattan for the purchase of bulk salt and the storage of that salt. And it's the first of its kind between our two agencies and represents some, quite a bit of planning time. It will help reduce the cost of our annual purchase of bulk salt that we use in the winter months on the roads and in Manhattan and Fort Riley, and we're hoping that this will spark new agreements with Fort Riley. So we're pleased that that has finally worked out and wanted to call it to everyone's attention. I want to just point out that in the lobby and on the web are some activity guides for the Parks and Recreation Commission for fall events, and I'm sure you can find something of interest in there for. There's one flyer actually for therapeutic recreation and one for senior scene, senior citizens, I assume. And so Eddie, I just wanted to make sure that people knew the website is where I think you'd get it quickly, but if not, there are brochures in the lobby. Let's see. With that, we'll move on to... I lost my agenda. Hold on. Here we go. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And the items on the consent agenda, as you may know, are those of a routine and housekeeping nature or those items that have previously been reviewed by the city commission. A commissioner may request that an item be removed to the end, be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Yeah, I'll comment real quick. I'll be short, but I just want to iterate on item D1, the approval of the 2019 city budget. Tonight, I'm going to be voting no on that as I did in our first hearing. And just real quick, the reasons why, as all of you know, the city's on a hiring freeze right now. We have, what, around 20 full-time positions currently open, and city services have not collapsed. And I don't think that during the budget process, we did quite enough due diligence in evaluating if we need to hire back all of those full-time positions. Not saying that we leave all 20 open or empty, but I think maybe we could have reduced two or three to avoid a mill levy increase. Also, the last comment kind of to do with the budget that I hope next year that we have a little bit of a closer look at is the step increase. I am all for making sure that city employees get their quota increases year to year, and I'm all for making sure city employees are making a livable wage. And if we need to adjust wages so that everybody's making a livable wage, I want to do that. But I would much rather see that step increase be a merit increase to where if you do above satisfactory job, you deserve a raise. But if you're here for a year, you shouldn't just get a raise because you're here for a year. So I hope next year, we're able to evaluate those step increases a little bit closer because I would much, much rather see those be based on merit rather than just a year of tenure. So I'll be voting no on D1.
Are there other Commissioner comments?
Yeah, just to follow on on what Commissioner McKee said, I also voted against the city budget, and I'm going to do that again because I think some of the suggestions that Commissioner McKee had, we should probably have investigated that. They merit some look, but my primarily concern was not so much the work city staff did. I think Ron and the city staff worked real hard towards my concepts of lean management and cut as much waste out of it as possible, but I don't think the city commission cut as much waste as possible. And particularly, two things that I've harped on that they're probably tired of me mentioning it, but outside agencies, my goal was to keep the outlay of that to one mil, and we exceeded that. And then our travel expenses, which we keep exceeding also. We put them in the budget and we bust them every year, and to me, that's just crazy. And so I can't support that, but I do appreciate the work that the staff did on that. And then there's one other item that's sort of related to that, and that's item M on here, which is the Habitat for Humanity, and that's to waive some sewer connection fees and some building fees. And I'm not going to support that simply because the city manager's busy trying to scramble to make the 218th budget work, and this also falls in the category of outside agencies. And we've already given away $575,000 plus, and we just keep adding to it, adding to it, and that makes his job harder. And I understand the value of that project, and I get it. It makes the house more affordable, but if we waived the building fees and the meter hookup fees for every house in the city, it would make them all more affordable. So I'm not going to support that either.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mike? No? Okay. So we need a motion. I move. Oh, sorry. At this point, I'd like to ask for public comment on the consent agenda. And it's published on the web. Hi, please come forward. Hi.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. Hi, my name is Tammy Mose. I am here to represent Manhattan Catholic School, specifically, let me call it on here. So I, um, apologies. It's J. All right. Yes. Specifically, item J. And I'm talking on the Juliet-Pierre intersection by Manhattan Catholic Schools. I'm here to represent our school. I'm the PTO president as well as a parent of two children. And last November, we worked with the Manhattan, City of Manhattan Public Works and the Flint Hill Metropolitan Planning Organization, and we created a tactical urbanism project at our corner of their school to kind of slow down the traffic. As you know, the road of Juliet is highly traveled, I think partly because it's a great thoroughfare between 18 and points, and there's no stop signs, and you can get really place to place very quickly. Unfortunately, we do have our school right there, and our school's divided up into three buildings. And so our kiddos and our teachers and our parents are crossing three sections often. In fact, we did a study that showed the safe route schools to school count last fall showed over 6,500 crossings a week, making it one of the busiest intersections in our city. That being said, we did take kind of proactive solution, and we did some crosswalk paintings, and we put out some cones, and it did minimize. We slowed down some traffic about five miles per hour. And I understand that there is another opportunity to get permanent structures in place, permanent curb extensions in the Juliet Avenue Phase Four transportation, and that's why I'm here to kind of apply for that and hopefully win you over and put us in that budget. I think you would be making the right choice. I think you'd be very happy with that decision to include us into that project. I do know that the Phase Three is including further down the road a little bit by Woodrow Wilson, and while they warrant it very well, their flow of pedestrian traffic isn't as much as ours. So again, I highly request that you consider including our corner into the Juliet Avenue Phase Four project design plans. And I have a letter and signatures, 93 signatures, to support this proposal if I can leave that with someone. We can get more signatures if necessary. Are there any questions for me? No?
Who would like anybody? No response? All right. Yes, thank you, Tammy. So at this point, are there others who wish to speak with regard to the consent agenda? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes, except no on item D1 and item M.
And Commissioner McKee.
Yes, except on item D1.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of item D1, which carries three to two, and item F, which carries four, or item M, excuse me, which carries four to one.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the general agenda, and this will be the first reading of an ordinance amending an ordinance, ordinance numbers 4992, 6012, and 6353 of the Plaza West Commercial Planned Unit Development to allow for a car dealer's license to sell cars associated with the new car museum located on Lot 3 of Samurai Edition Unit 2. And the presenter this evening is Chad Bunter, the Assistant Director of Community Development. Welcome, Chad.
Good evening.
And real quick, Chad, before we move on, I'm going to abstain from this vote. Mr. Morgan is my employer, so I think I have a substantial conflict of interest. So I'm going to go in the back and eat leftover cookies, and you guys can decide the future.
This is, I think, a fairly straight forward request, so if you want to bring a cookie back out, it shouldn't take... Sorry. The item before you is a PED amendment for the Plaza West commercial property located here near the intersection of Seth Child Road and Anderson Avenue. More specifically, it's this land highlighted here and this building. All of this commercial area is in one way or another associated with the Plaza West PED. It's gone through a number of iterations and amendments for a variety of things, and it is not a young PED by any means. It's several years old. And because of so many amendments and the age of it and just the change of how we do things, it's best described as a PED to provide uses similar to our neighborhood, C2 Neighborhood Shopping Center District. And so I think we're all fairly familiar with this area. The owner has recently bought this land and the majority of the commercial space, and you may have heard, they are looking to renovate it to include the property owner's cars as a car museum for the public, commercial endeavor there in this building. Let's see. This is kind of the exterior renovations, if you will. The interior, as you can imagine, is for museums, so there'll be a lot of open space. I think they have some areas for educational space, meeting rooms, offices, areas to clean or to work on the vehicles, both as part as upkeep as well as an educational portion of the museum. And then, as you can see here, the signage package related to the outside with banners, the building or the museum name, and I believe these would have, these banner areas would have the ability to change over time as a collection evolves or new special events at the facility. I should have clicked this, sorry. That gives you more of an idea of what's occurring here. The zoning administrator and Community Development Department, through reviewing the PED documents as they exist today, found that the museum would meet the intent and the uses permitted with the Plaza West PED. And then, and renovations, I believe, have begun to occur, and they could establish the museum as it is. A wrinkle in the proposal was to apply for and receive a car dealership license at the site primarily to allow for the museum to purchase new vehicles as they become available wherever, or I suppose sell a vehicle here and there if someone really, really, really wants one of these vehicles. I'll allow the applicant to speak more to it, but the vehicle license would be more in line with the C5 Highway Business District and not something that was permitted through the PEDs or even remotely close in terms of the intent. We understand in the building, as explained to us, it would be easy to say yes, there won't be a violation of the PED, but that would open it for anybody to establish a new or used car lot on any part of the site, and with the amount of asphalt that is at the site, it would be an advantageous spot. And so the Community Development determination was that was a substantial change to the PED and needing to come before you for an amendment to the PED. And while we're at it, we are also addressing the sign package that's being proposed. It's a, the sign, especially these images, and the number of wall signs would be larger than what our typical C2 district would allow or what the PED would allow. So those are the two elements. Surrounding zoning, again, I mentioned this was the PED. We have a variety of residential throughout, single-family, county-zoned areas, multifamily, residential, single-family, as you all are familiar. And then again, the commercial areas in terms of surrounding land use. Some images, there are, there is a car dealership in the area, but we felt to keep the integrity of the PED and not go above or beyond, above and beyond our administrative bounds, we felt this was a need for an amendment. So a few more images. And then showing the comprehensive plan as it is and has been for a number of years a commercial, community commercial center. So with that, I don't have much more. This item was reviewed by the planning board and recommended approval to you all with a few conditions related to the use, some limitations of where that dealership can occur primarily entirely within the building, and also a condition related to the signage. So be happy to answer your questions that you may have and would defer others to the applicant.
Thank you, Chad.
How about saying something about the signage? I think you said it was higher than we would normally allow in a PED. Can you expand on that?
I probably misspoke if I said that. It would be more than what we would allow in the C2 district, which this PED is primarily based on. So as you know, a PED, you can, it's a customized zoning district, so you can exceed what its core district is. I believe it fits well within the size of the building and its scope, scale, so it's not out of line, but it wouldn't be allowed if this was straight zoning C2. So that's the other factor for the Planning and Development Amendment.
So the Planning Board approved the signage that has been in this plan?
Yes.
Okay. So what is the increase when you speak more to that?
I don't have it in front of me. It's primarily a percentage of the building facade. It's 20% of that building facade. The biggest factor is there is a slight increase with these permanent wall signs, but also these large temporary, I guess you'd call it, images that could change over time as different events or cars that they want to feature. These would exceed the C2 district allowance.
Are any of them electronic?
No.
Okay.
That was a question asked specifically by the Planning Board. They're all just static banner-type material signage.
Are there other questions? All right. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
At this point, we would, the commission has no further questions. Are there public comments? Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? Would the applicant care to speak? Seeing no one, we'll proceed. Close the public comments section and ask...
I just have a couple of comments. I do support this project. I think one of the things for Village Plaza, that area, it's always been kind of an eyesore. When we see downtown, we're making plans, it's being successful. Aggieville, we're looking to the future of Aggieville and the vision that's happening there, implementing that part of it. Grandmere is taking off. There's lots of nice shopping centers, shopping development that's occurring there. And Village Plaza, we just didn't know what to do with. So when people like Ward and Brenda Morgan step up and say they want to make this into a car museum and also get the car license, dealership license, whatever they need to do to make that area successful, I think is a positive thing for our community. We want all areas of Manhattan to be successful, and I think, I'm hopeful with this museum of sorts happening in Village Plaza that the other realtors or restaurants will also want to be in that space. And if there's a domino effect for that, it will be an extremely successful area because so many people pass by that shopping center. I always feel terrible that I don't have a reason to go there and do something more. So this is good, and I'm thankful that they're taking it upon themselves to make it successful.
When did you have I think?
I'll just make the motion. That's what I was going to do.
I would just like to say that I plan to support the proposal. I'm glad, the building has been empty, and it's kind of sad that it's been empty, but I appreciate the novel idea, actually. It's not one we would have ordinarily heard, and so I'm eager to see what it becomes and have people go there when they come to visit our city. I think it's a great way, a great opportunity to try something new, and so I'm eager to see it.
Okay, I'll make the motion. We approve first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 4992, 6012, and 6353 for the Plaza West Commercial Planned Unit Development, a 7.53 acre lot generally located in the southwest at the Anderson Avenue and Seth Child Road interchange, based on the findings in the staff report, with three conditions of approval and the recommendation of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. City Clerk, Gary Feas, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Commissioner Ready.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
And Mayor Morris.
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Okay. We'll get our fifth commissioner in here now. The next item on the agenda is to consider renaming, renaming the park at Lee Mill Heights to the Roger Schultz Community Park and approving the master plan for the park. The presenter tonight is Wyatt Thompson, the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. Welcome.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. This is an exciting evening. It really culminates two years' worth of planning and community engagement for this site and really wraps up work that began in the late '90s and early 2000s when the conversations first started about developing, finding, creating parkland in the southwest part of the community, which was envisioned to be a new growth area. And it certainly has grown over that time period. Lots of people call that area home now. So this plan, I think, is an exciting culmination of all of that work. Last March, earlier March, when we met, you heard from a number of our partners in the process and spoke about their involvement and engagement. You heard from residents, there won't be as quite as much pomp and circumstance and things as occurred previously, but I do want to recap some of the conversation we had back in March and then request your consideration of accepting the name and the plan for the master plan tonight. Partnerships, we spoke of, a number of partners came to the table to help develop the plan, and starting with the National Park Service, we applied for a Rivers Trails Conservation Assistance Grant, and they were able to send the National Park Service representatives to assist with meeting facilitation, high concept development, and really brought a level of professionalism to the plan that has helped us tremendously. You see the other partners, a number of local agencies, schools, the Discovery Center, people that brought their expertise to bear on this plan, and I think the final document shows what those partners brought. In terms of the park name, when the original of 70 acres was donated and purchased, Tim and Angie Schultz were the owners at that time. They donated about half and sold the city about half, and as part of that contract, they retained the naming rights to the park, and their proposed name is the Roger Schultz Community Park in honor of Tim's father, who helped develop that area, the housing and subdivision areas. And Roger was actually the one that brought the idea of a park in that area to the city all those years ago. So we thought it was a fitting tribute, and I believe Tim is here tonight and can speak to that if he wants to. He was, he spoke at the March meeting as well about the significance of the park to his family. So we would recommend naming the park the Roger Schultz Community Park and as well as the master plan. So that's, in terms of the plan itself, as we discussed in March, there are nine chapters and some appendices. There aren't a lot of changes from what we discussed in March, but we will kind of recap each of those chapters. The majority of those changes, based on our conversation, was to Chapter Seven, that implementation chapter, which deals with phasing and funding, and so we will spend a little bit more time there tonight. As you may recall, the park is a 93-acre park in the southwest part of Manhattan, open prairie woodland areas surrounded by residential on three sides and some undeveloped land on a couple of sides as well. Chapter Two talked about the park history from the pre-settlement period clear through park acquisition. Not a lot of changes to this chapter in the report text, except that we did provide a little bit more accurate information from that Miller Ranch period of time. We had some contact with, some more contact with two of the Miller sisters who are still living, and they provided some clarification to some of the details about their family's involvement in the park. The rest of the history chapter is as you saw it previously in March and covers our acquisition from Tim and Angie and then the process to gain all 93 acres. Chapter Three is the site assessment chapter, which kind of documents our process to investigate the site, understand the resources that were there, and how we could best develop portions of that site for public access and use. The only changes to this chapter were some swapping of some photographs of some plants that we had misnamed or had the wrong photograph applied to the name, but other than that, this kind of just documents the process for us. Chapter Four documented the community engagement process. We had over 1,000 interactions with residents over the period of the planning effort, whether they were at public meetings, neighborhood meetings, or events that we hosted in the park to draw attention to the park and the resource that was there. Chapter Five showed our concept design process and the different iterations and plans that we allowed the community an opportunity to review. There weren't any changes to these chapters. There were no changes to the Chapter Six, which defines kind of what we envisioned the park. There were no changes to the Chapter 6, which defines kind of what we envisioned the park to be. That throughout the process has been very well received by the community in terms of the overall vision for what we anticipate developing the park to be. So most of the park remains natural. There's only nine acres of what we call developed area, and the majority of that, as we believe as Tim and Angie wished, was a natural prairie area that people could enjoy within the city. And so just some images that are from the plan that show that, a couple of the developed areas at the Loma Ridge entry, parking turnaround, trailhead pathways, playground, picnic areas, shelters, those type of improvements would occur here. The Miller Parkway entrance along the south side, again, kind of a community entrance, a little bit larger scale improvement, parking, plaza, restrooms, overlooked structures, larger playground, open space for a variety of activities, some picnic shelters, trails, and some images of what that, some of that developed area could look like as you enter the park from the different sides. And then the third developed area is the Ledgestone Ridge Open Space, which is the north side of Miller Parkway, which we envision as kind of an open recreation or play lawn where you could toss a ball, toss a frisbee, take your dog out on leash, and then as well as trail connections to the other portions of the park from this point as well. Chapter 7, implementation chapter, is where the majority of our conversation was focused on in March. Based on your feedback, we did revise how we broke the project into phases. We took a harder look at costs and tried to break those into more manageable chunks. It is still a significant project and it's not going to happen overnight, but somewhere between 2.4 and 3.4 million dollars for total development. The early phases are smaller and we think that they can be managed, some of them with money that's budgeted in 2018 and 2019 CIPs for at least creating that initial access ability. And then over time, we think we could develop additional trails. We can pursue grants and other funding sources as well as city CIP to develop those other amenities over time. The phasing is a suggestion. Once we get into actual project details and implementation through that budgeting process, we'd refine those budget numbers, we'd refine the scope of those work of each phase, but I think that this provides a general roadmap for the department, for the city, moving forward. Phase, we're calling it Phase Zero, is the prairie restoration and management phase, which is more of an ongoing process in terms of how we manage the parkland. But we thought that it's important to list this first because it really is key to the overall enjoyment of the community using that space. If we allow the land to, if we lose the prairie resource to red cedar or other invasives, we've lost really what the community was interested in in terms of being able to access and enjoy and use that area. So prairie restoration is a critical component, and we talk about the details of that in Chapter 8. But we would envision that as the first and ongoing process to really reclaim portions of that native landscape. And then the first official phase, I guess Phase 1A and B. Phase 1A constructs the Loma Ridge entrance, provides some rough grading and basic parking and basic trail access through that portion of the park, which was an attempt to make it, that area more usable for folks on the immediate. And then Phase 1B focuses on both the Miller Parkway south side and taking what's left of the rock pile that's on the south side, moving it to the north side as fill material, and then final grading both the north and the south side and seeding to make both of those areas usable open spaces. So both of those are, all of that Phase 1 improvement sets us up for future improvements at each of those sites and allows for that basic public access and of open space and access to trails that we discussed in March. Phase 2A, and Phase 2 kind of starts development of some of those spaces and adds some amenities. So Phase 2A adds playground and picnic elements to the Loma Ridge entrance, adds irrigation to the Loma Ridge, or to the Ledgestone area to make that more of a community open space, and then develops some trailhead parking and additional trails at the Miller Parkway south site. Phase 3A, and 3B, and C, kind of continue development of the Loma Ridge area with additional play and picnic elements, additional trail development, which is an ongoing process, and then potential development of a restroom around those play structures at Loma Ridge. And then Phase 4 is the largest of the phases, it's the longest-range phase, and that's development of that higher-intensity community entrance at the Miller Parkway. And so we've suggested that it's designed all at once and perhaps implemented over a couple of phases as we can acquire funding to develop that entry plaza, parking lot, playground, event lawn, overlooked structures, and things of that sort. So that's kind of the overall strategy for how we would envision developing the 93 acres. It will take, it will take time. We did propose kind of an example. If we were to do it in 10 years, what would that look like? I think that that's ultimately for administration and future commissions to determine how quickly we can get through all pieces of this project and pieces of other plans and projects that we have. But this at least starts to lay out a strategy for how, in smaller bite-sized pieces, we could potentially develop this park out. The chapter does continue to reference multiple funding sources, including grant opportunities that we think we could pursue for a park like this. Chapter 8 is the land management strategy that we discussed in length in March. We are recommending prairie restoration through eradication of the cedars and other woody vegetation in the upland prairie areas, whether that be through cutting or prescribed fire. We have partnerships in place with the Kansas Forest Service. We're pursuing grants with U.S. Fish and Wildlife through their Fish and Wildlife Partners Program to bring to the table knowledge as well as reimbursement opportunities to reclaim that prairie and maintain that in a way that the public has told us they wanted. As part of that land management process, there's education that would be involved, there's interpretive signage that could be done, there's partnerships with the Flint Hills Discovery Center for program or educational opportunities, all of which the plan references and that we would pursue as we move through those processes. Chapter 8 also talks about trail standards and partnerships with the Kansas Trails Council and with Native Trail Solutions and Manhattan Trail Works here locally. They were involved in the trail planning aspect. We would envision multiple types of trail surfaces, some accessible, some more off-road adventure kind of hiking experiences, as well as a system of signage that would let people know what they're getting into. And then Chapter 8 kind of provides those evidence-based standards for not only the land management, but also for how to develop that trail network in a sustainable fashion so that we're not out there battling erosion issues or drainage issues and having to reconstruct things. That was kind of a quick recap. I'm happy to dive in deeper into any of those topics if you would like to talk about those. But tonight, our request is that you consider approving the name of the park as the Roger Schultz Community Park, as well as approve the master plan as presented and proposed in your packet. The Park and Recreation Advisory Board considered both of those and recommends approval of both actions. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you Wyatt. Are there questions from the commission?
Yeah, Tim, could you tell us a little bit more about Roger? I think this is a good opportunity for the community to hear about him.
Well, gosh, thanks Jared. Well, many of you knew my dad, and he passed away in 2009. Certainly, we started off as a construction company and eventually worked our way into land development and things, and been at that for 25 years now. So my dad was, he's a very special guy. He loved what he did. He loved people just like yourselves, past leadership in Manhattan. He was, he just enjoyed thoroughly what we do, and that made him good at it. Some of us struggle with some safety things. But Dad was, he was very, very good at it. He was a very calm person that had a lot of vision. And it's, I think, naming it, it's very fitting, I guess, for him. Anybody that knew him would, I think, agree. And I certainly would thank you guys in advance for hopefully some support. I thank Wyatt, Wyatt's done a fantastic job of keeping me abreast of what's going on, and I know it's a huge project, I guess, as it's presented, but I think if we chip away at it over several years, that this would be a great, great addition. And I know he would certainly approve and be excited about it as well, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Commissioners, are there other comments? I'll open for public comments, but if the commission has any.
Are there public comments? Anyone have a comment on the proposal that you've heard this evening?
Okay, thank you very much. I would close the public comment period and ask Commissioners to speak to their...
Just make the motion. I think it's a great master plan and a great idea, and why would anybody not approve it? So the motion is, let's approve naming the park at Lee Mill Heights as the Roger Schultz Community Park and approve the Roger Schultz Community Park Master Plan.
Second, I'd also just like to say thanks to the entire Schultz family. I know your dad for a short period of time, and I've only lived here a few years, but he helped us when we were building our house. Great vision, and not only vision, the ability to follow through according to the development plan. So this is really a great thing for the city.
Yeah, I just wanted to also quickly add, unfortunately, I did not, wasn't able to meet your dad, but I think the apple probably doesn't fall far from the tree because one of my fraternity brothers has had the opportunity to work for you, and he went out of his way yesterday to tell me what a hard-working, great guy you were. So I just wanted to tell you that. And I also wanted to thank you, Schultz family as a whole, for donating the land in the first place, and also just all the work that you do around affordable housing. Obviously, that's really near and dear to my heart, so I'm excited to support this tonight.
Yes, it has my support as well, and once again, the Schultz have been a staple to the Manhattan community as well as the region, and I think it's very appropriate to dedicate it with Schultz's name on it. And we are thankful for the land, not only for donating it, but also for the vision for the master plan for quality of life issues and trails and parks. And I think that's one of the key reasons why people like living in Manhattan and in our region. I think if it's a 10-year plan and we go through it slowly, it'll be beautiful. And I think a lot of work has been put in by Wyatt and all the partners involved. So thank you to the Schultz family as well as Wyatt's commitment to the project.
I too would like to thank you for, Tim, for working with the city with regard to the development of this park. We always appreciate the contribution of land for parks, and we like the idea that the parks are all different, they aren't all the same. And so this is yet another category, I guess. And I am really enthusiastic about clearing the red cedars, so that we don't have to call them noxious weeds or something. But we're doing a good thing for our community, and we're even getting ahead of the development in that area. And so as people move into that area, the park will be in progress and will be an asset to that part of the community. So I'm supportive of the proposal this evening. And we have a motion and a second to name the park and approve the master plan. So Gary, would you call the role?
Commissioner Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner McKee.
Yes.
Mayor Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Dodson.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Item C on the agenda this evening, it regards the construction phases of the Bluemont Hill project by the Kiwanis Club and the Johnny Call project, both of which are fundraising for these park improvements. The presenters this evening, to begin, will be Eddie Eastus, Director of Parks and Recreation, and Jason Hilders, maybe.
Before we start, it's probably appropriate to point out that both Commissioner Butler and I are members of the Johnny Call Committee, so we can, I think, continue to be objective about this, but we have been putting a little bit of our effort into it as well.
It's a good point, thank you. Mr. Eastus.
All right, thank you. Thank you Mayor, Commissioners. I'll be quick, we have a lot of people here tonight that would like to speak. I just, reflecting your comments, we have two projects tonight to discuss, as well as alternative processes for these projects to move forward. Manhattan Kiwanis Club-sponsored Bluemont Hill Scenic Overlook Project, and the Johnny Call Committee-sponsored Johnny Call Viewing Plaza. Both projects have been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The board has expressed support for both projects. Parks and Recreation Department is very excited and supportive of these projects as well. Bluemont Hill provides ADA access, as well as a safe viewing platform, as opposed to if you've been up on that hillside, you have to scramble around to enjoy the overlook of the community. So very nice improvement to that portion of Bluemont Hill. The Johnny Call Viewing Plaza also provides ADA access, and it's consistent with the draft City Park Master Plan that identifies the need for improved access and some interpretive aspect of Johnny Call. Today, you know, it's a dirt path, it's just grass around Johnny Call, so getting improved access to that, it would really benefit the city park. Both the Kiwanis Club and Johnny Call Committee members are here tonight, they're going to present their projects to you. But before we start with that, Mr. Bill Frost is going to cover some legal perspective and so that alternative processes that you might want to consider for these projects to move forward. So with that, I'll stand aside.
Is Jason gonna move the PowerPoint or do I need to do that?
This is the same one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if you just buttoned it down.
Down there. There you go.
Those three slides that he had put in there.
Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. It's always nice to be back. We've got these two great projects that are proposed that, as I understand it, for the most part are donated goods and services to construct these public improvements in our parks. The last part of that phrase, "construct public improvements in our parks," is why the legal staff is here to provide some information and some guidance. Whenever we construct a public project, whether it's in our parks or elsewhere, and whether it's a project we have undertaken ourselves, or ones like these that are proposed by others to be built, whenever those public projects are constructed, there are certain legal formalities that apply. Some of them apply through statutes that the state has adopted, some of them apply through our ordinances, and others apply, one way or the other, through our policies and procedures that have to be addressed. So the first legal requirement with these public projects come from a charter ordinance we adopted several years ago. I think it's Charter Ordinance Number 44. That charter ordinance exempts us from a statute that requires public projects in excess of $10,000 to be bid. Our charter ordinance does away with that strict requirement. It leaves bidding as kind of the default requirement for public projects, but it authorizes the commission to come up with alternative ways to address that project that doesn't include bidding. And obviously, these two projects need that alternative process, presumably, because you probably don't want to go through a bidding process to get this done. So the legal staff has come up with some alternative processes for you to consider as the first step in this process. as the first step in this process. Actually, three options there, and I'm going to talk about them a little bit more, so we'll kind of skip ahead. The first thing that has to occur with these projects is that there has to be some type of contract or agreement with somebody to do the project. That's what authorizes it. That's what sets the alternative process in place. I presume the question is, well, what do we need a contract for? Why can't we just say to one of the proposers, "Go forward and do it. We like your proposal. Go do that." Well, the first answer is, when you say that, when you say, "We like your proposal. Go forward and do that," you've established a contract. The difficulty is, since that contract isn't in writing, you don't really know who that contract is with, you don't really know what the terms of that contract is. And so if at some point in time, there is a need to know those things, we've put ourselves in a position where they're difficult to come up with. So obviously, the legal staff suggests that that contract should be a written document with somebody. Now, who's the contract with, with these two proposals? That creates some difficulty. There are two different types of arrangements we could make. We could make what we've referred to as a license agreement. And the license agreement simply authorizes somebody, whoever that quote contractor is, to go build the project and do it on their own. The other alternative is a contract like we would normally enter into to build our own public projects. As I said, both of those processes have some challenge because there isn't anyone in either of these proposals that is an entity, as I understand it, that is capable of entering into contracts. What we would normally like to do is have a general contractor that we either contract with or license on behalf of the sponsors to do these projects. I'm told that is a difficulty in this process. We can either do that with an entity, or we can do it with a person. But one or the other of those two things probably has to occur. As the slide says, the only practical difference between the license agreement and the contract is the license agreement really makes the project a standalone for the entity that's doing it. And we step back and it's theirs. The contract is more of our project that we've contracted with for somebody to build. Many of the same requirements would be set forth in both documents. The first requirement that has to be addressed, at least in one of these projects, is when public improvements, the cost of those improvements exceed $100,000, the statute says we must take a bond from the contractor or the entity we're contracting with. It's what we refer to as a statutory bond that essentially ensures that everybody is paid for their services. That statute is found in the section of the Kansas statutes dealing with mechanic's liens. Because in the private sector, that bond isn't required. But if you contract with somebody to do something on your real estate, and either somebody doesn't get paid, or a supplier doesn't get paid for his materials that he supplied, it gives those people the right to file a lien, it's called a mechanic's lien, against that property. In public projects, we don't want mechanic's liens filed on our public property, so the statute requires any public official entering into a contract for a public improvement to take this bond that takes the place of the value of the land. And if there's a claim from somebody that doesn't get paid, they make a claim against the bond.
So real quick, just to make sure that I understand that process. So we would go out and purchase a bond on the bond market and then hold that money until the project was complete? And when the project was complete, we would use that money to pay back the bond?
Not exactly.
Okay, can you explain it to me?
The contractor goes to a bonding company, bonding slash insurance company, and purchases a bond from that company. That company writes a bond to the state of Kansas that says, "If somebody doesn't get paid in this process, we will pay them." Okay? The contractor purchases the bond, not the city.
Got it.
Now, in a conventional project, the cost of that bond is contained within the bid or the relationship. So in effect, the city pays for it. It just goes through our contractual relationship and the contractor buys.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Okay, thank you.
Again, in these two proposals, it's somewhat problematic because unless there is a recognized entity or person that is capable of going to that bonding company and purchasing that bond, and not everybody qualifies. In other words, the insurance company may look at the person asking for the bond and say, "I'm not willing to insure you because you're not insurable." And when you have an entity that's not authorized to enter into contracts, that's a problem that we're going to face with the bond. The bond is only technically required for projects that exceed $100,000. And as I understand it, that applies to the Johnny Call project, but perhaps not to the Bluemont project. As a practical matter, our processes normally, if this was a project we were building ourselves, either one of those, we would require the bond in both instances. I think Brian Johnson told me anything over $20,000, we normally require the bond, or some similar security for the payment of those expenses. There's law on the subject. There's an AG opinion that says it's not an option, it's mandatory in public improvement projects that the public official take that bond. So this is problematic in these two proposals as how we address that. No matter what our relationship is, somehow the commission has to, in the document that we would prepare, whether it's a license agreement or a contract, you just identify this process that we're going through as the alternative under the charter ordinance to bidding. That's a simple thing. There are other provisions that normally would be included in a contract that we would enter into for our own projects. They are not mandatory provisions. They are provisions that the commission, however we establish this relationship and whoever we establish it with, can require or not require, depending on what level of exposure or risk the commission is willing to undertake. I've listed those. The first one is approval of some plans. Normally, we would require a design of something that the city engineer is going to approve and say, yes, it meets our codes, it meets other requirements like ADA. Both of these projects have ADA implications, and so the plans normally would be approved to say that, yes, they meet those things. Normally, we would have a requirement that the city inspect the construction as it's ongoing to make sure it complies with both the plans and our codes, our building codes. We would normally require a performance bond, which is a bond that says, "Contractor, if you don't complete this project the way we've agreed you're going to complete it, the bonding company would provide us with the funds to complete it." That's probably the least important of these factors. It's something you could include if you want to, but it's not necessarily something in these two things that would be required. We would require insurance to be provided by the contractor. Again, not mandatory, depending on how much risk. If we have this relationship with a contractor or with the groups that are going to construct these things, the potential for things occurring that somebody could be liable for is fairly significant. We would always require insurance when we are contracting for our own projects. In this instance, the city's exposure for that liability is still there, and if you don't have the insurance coverage by the entity performing the work, the likelihood of that liability falling on the city increases substantially. Again, it's something you could waive. Requirements that money be paid to the city to ensure there's a source of funds to complete the project is normally something we would require also. Again, not absolutely required here. The city can, and in fact, in the license agreement, one of the advantages to the proposers is that we wouldn't have that requirement in a license agreement because the party themselves would be responsible for the money and making sure things are paid. And then the statutory bond, as I said, is probably something that is not mandatory in the project that's under $100,000, so.
One more question about the bond. If we, if the commission said, "We want to do all six of these things," that obviously requires more time of city staff. So in the example of the Bluemont project costing $70,000, would you have to equate the city staff time into the total cost of the project?
For the purposes of the statutory bond?
Yeah.
No, that's not necessary. I mean, there's obviously a cost there. But technically, the cost that that bond is looking for is the cost to provide the person doing the work.
Service, yeah.
Rather than the inherent cost to the city.
Okay, got it.
So.
Bill, one of the things that we need some help thinking through here is, in the case where the project is above $100,000 and you have a statutory bond requirement, it's not necessarily a question of capacity for any one of the, let's say we have 20 people who are donating time and materials and so on. It is that in a normal contractual arrangement for bonding, a GM would also require flowdowns through each one of the subs to, so that the bonding agent then would see that the absorption of the risk is passed to the appropriate parties. And in this case, since, I mean, all of these firms that will be represented are parts of the community and are doing this because they believe in it, this makes it a little bit sticky. So as we go through this over time, if you've got some ideas how we might be able to do that, we'd appreciate it too.
I appreciate that. The requirement for that statutory bond in cases like this, as a practical matter, is probably, if the legislature thought about it, they might say, "Well, it's not necessary in these kind of instances. You don't even need it." But they didn't say that. They said, "Anytime public officials enter into this arrangement for a public improvement, you got to get the bond." So it doesn't fit nicely in this proposal. It adds probably to the cost of the projects, but the statute is there and it puts the burden on these public officials to say, "You're required to require that bond." So legal staff, and that AG opinion quite clearly says, "It's not something you can waive. It's mandatory. You got to do it." So the legal staff is going to stand behind that and say, "We've got to have that bond somehow." Again, it would be more, it would be, the best scenario would be is if the proposers could talk a general, licensed general contractor into being the face of that proposal that we could contract with, they could get the bond and everything could be done. But I understand the difficulties in following that.
We discussed that the, I think it's 4% of construction cost. Does that sound right?
Three to five is what Jason says. So as you go through these proposals, I guess I would ask that you think about how we construct these, and if you have questions, feel free to ask as you go through them, and we'll try to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay.
We'll just keep moving right into Kiwanis' presentation.
Okay.
Mayor and commissioners and city staff, it's a great honor to be here tonight to present our project to you, which we hope that you'll find just as wonderful as we envisioned.
We need your name and...
Doug Malone.
Yes, and address.
2033 Estella Drive here in Manhattan.
And you are the representative of the Kiwanis Club. Manhattan Kiwanis, okay.
I'd also like to introduce the rest of my Kiwanis members that are here, if you'd like to stand.
Yes, please.
And I'll point out some of the key players in our...
Okay, very good.
All of them are, but Kent Foster is the architect that's been working with us on the project and a member of our club. Vic Steiner's kind of been one of our head people, working with the contractor and the money part of it, along with Rod Calavota and Kitty Persley, our secretary, and Bill Persley, our president, very active in this project as well. To give you a little bit of history on this sign, I need to delve back into Kiwanis itself. Kiwanis International was got started in 1915, a small group of six men in Detroit, Michigan. And it has now over 16,000 clubs in 80 nations. Our club here in Manhattan started in 1922. We're the 717th club out of 16,000. So we were one of the early starters in the Kiwanis International Group itself. We formed our club in 1922. One of our members at that time went out in about 1924, 1925 to Los Angeles, had seen the newly constructed Hollywood sign, thought that was pretty impressive, came back to our community in Manhattan, thought, "What a great idea to put something very similar to that in our community." So in 1927, we did start and built our Kiwanis Club built with a $100 budget, the Manhattan sign that you see pictured being constructed up there on the top left. It was built by our members and some citizens in the country, a lot of manual labor, about 30 cubic yards of concrete. Over the last 91 years, our members have maintained that sign twice a year. We go up and whitewash it, along with help of fraternity members in recent years. We also weed eat and repair, help with soil erosion and things like that have taken place over the years. So the sign's very dear to our hearts. In 2015, Kiwanis International reached out to all the clubs and said, "This is our 100th centennial anniversary. We'd like for each club to do something significant in their community to recognize this." So our club brainstormed and we thought, "What a wonderful thing to do our first major project, which is the Manhattan sign tied into somehow." We came up with the idea that we needed to make it more accessible to the people in our community. If you've ever been up there, I'm sure about everybody has, it's a beautiful sight, but it's also very difficult to get down there, especially if you have a disability of some type. Here, we came up with the idea of building an ADA accessible ramp and pathway to get down there, and then a nice place to have a viewing area where we could overlook the Manhattan sign in a safe way. And also, if I happen to climb down on the actual ladder, you still have access by the stairs that would be there, where we're built by an Eagle Scout, and those would be maintained in this design, because it would not be disturbed. Our platform is also designed to fit very naturally into the surrounding there. We don't want to disturb a lot of that area. I stepped down to this slide. It kind of shows the Manhattan sign as it exists today on the left side. And over where, like the MAN, is kind of where the platform area would be. It would not be extending all the way across the entire sign. It's just a small area there, kind of depicted by the drawing on the right side there. We've been working very closely with Kent Foster of Ebert Mayo Design Group in designing this, and Schwab Eaton donated their engineering surveying skills to our club early on, and working very closely with the city early on stages of this. As we've been working through this, we've had a lot of contributions, both from civic and corporate donations. I think we can safely say that we've got about all the funds raised as we speak today. We'd like to, that's our $70,000 budget. About $50,000 of that is in donations, and about $20,000 of that's in kind donations by some of, like DNR Construction, who is our contractor we've been working with. Midwest Concrete Materials is donating the concrete. Fire Construction is stone. Wildcat Tree Services, Charlie Potriff has volunteered to cut down a large oak tree that he has and mill it to the boards for the decking, and our club member... And our club members will probably be the ones that go up there and screw the deckboards in when it's done. Manco Windows has volunteered and donated to put up... Let me go back to this other... On the side there, you can see the metal fence or... That's what I'm looking for, railing. And Manco looked at that and said, "We would like to donate glass, to make a glass wall against there." So it doesn't have to be the metal bars. And that would just be on the platform part of it, not necessarily on the ramp going up to it. And so that'll make it nice and less visible from down below. It'll blend in more and also open it up more. So that's another gift that we've been giving to our club. So that's what Manco Windows is doing. We've also had, like I said, in-kind contributions from Ebert Mayo Design Group and some other places such as that too. We think this will be a definite improvement to our community and make it safer and make it accessible to all members of our community. As we all know, that Manhattan sign is an icon in our community. It's been there for over 90 years. And we'd like to see it maintained and enjoyed by more people and just move forward for the next 90 years on it. So any questions that anybody has that I could answer?
Doug, when you came to Rotary, I think you had some numbers about total cost of the project and then how much you'd raised and you're just about there, I know, when you reported last Thursday.
Right. We needed to raise about $50,000 in cash. And we are at $47,000 something as of the middle of this month. I think there's another $5,000 gift that we've been told would be there if we got close. So with that, I think it's fair to say that we've got the money raised for it. Greater Manhattan Community Foundation is where the money's been being kept. I'm working very closely with Vern Hendricks there. And he's been wonderful to work with. And that's part of the funding that we will be visiting with you and how that money will be dispersed, whether it needs to be assigned over to the city or if the city... Or we can make drawing out of that account as the funds are needed for the contractors and things like this. The rest of the money's just being donated. Construction companies donating their time. Like I said, these other places are donating some materials, so...
Most of the project that you're working on is the overlook itself. What about the trail to approach to the overlook from like the parking lot? Is that the city's trail?
It is. And it is our goal on that too, to improve that, to make that more even level. I'm not sure. Maybe one of the other members can go into... Kent might be able to talk a little bit more of that in detail. But yes, we would be improving that to make it wheelchair and walker, whatever, accessible without having the erosion stuff that's in some of the areas on it now.
I don't need any further explanation. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Is there... Pardon?
Discussion.
Sure. Yeah. Are there others that wish... Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there others that wish to speak to the Kiwanis proposal?
Hi, I'm Kent Foster, 6521 West 71st Avenue. I'm a 35-year member of Manhattan Kiwanis Club and an architect for Ebert Mayo Design Group. So we wanted to do this project to make it accessible to everyone because, you know, we all have disabilities of some type throughout our lives, whether you're a little, you know, two-year-old kid or a pregnant lady or someone in a wheelchair. We have all sorts of that disability possibility. So right now, the trail, as I see it, that goes from the parking lot to the steps is accessible. It could be improved, but right now it's accessible. There's a handicap stall at the parking lot, so we would just get people out there. And once we get to the top of the steps, we will ramp down as far as we can. We can't go much more than 18 or 20 inches. We just don't have room. And then we'll have this platform that will be raised above the rest of the trails or in front of the letters. So there'll be, you know, six or seven feet up above that trail portion, which you saw in that rendering, kind of gives you an idea. We're going to use natural materials to blend in as close as we can with the outcropping of stone. And the city forestry department, they will be involved with trimming trees or whatever is necessary. They've already done some of that area in preparation of this, but we're not going to cut down trees or anything like that except trim them just to, you know, fit the project in. We have a... The structural system will be such that we're going to go down to bedrock or below frost level. I suspect we'll have bedrock first. And with a system of piers and then wood joists that span across that and then this wood decking that will be over the top of all of that. And then the couple of different types of railings. But kind of in a nutshell, that's basically what we're looking at, so...
Fortunately, you won't have to go far for bedrock, right?
I think that's right. The hardest part is getting the material from the parking lot to the site.
Sure.
So that's where all the labor's going, so... Anyway, any other questions?
Thank you very much, Kent. Does anyone else wish to speak to the proposal? Thank you very much.
I want to make sure we understand and help me, Kent. DNR Construction, as my understanding is indicated, that they would serve as a general contractor for the project and that ours is willing to enter into a contract with the city to complete that project. So I want to make sure that's clearly understood. Kent? Any other questions before we move on?
Who's paying for the bond? They don't need a bond. They're under the $100,000. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you for only proposing $70,000. Less complicated.
Our next project is the Johnny Caw viewing plaza. And again, we have Johnny Caw committee members here. I don't know who's leading off. Mr. Kleemack, our park board chair, as well as the chair of the Johnny Caw committee.
Please come forward.
Magic buttons. Okay, thanks. Ed Kleemack, 2928 Gary Avenue. And I guess I'm the self-appointed chair of the Johnny Caw committee. I've got to say, this is like Parks and Rec night at the City Commission.
I know.
Which is a grand night because we're all into parks and recreation. And before I start my comments, I wanted to mention with Tim still being here, Roger Schultz, when I was on the commission, was the best, most well-informed and I think submitted to the city commission better than anyone that we ever had. And that's a testament to Roger that he would come before us and the projects would be well-explained. And I don't think we ever turned down a Roger Schultz project, so I just wanted to make that known. Both these projects, grassroots. You know, it's kind of special when you have a community that will come together and make these kind of things happen. We are very fortunate that we have a community to do that. Going back into time, and our project is less than a year old, actually. And I actually started, and we'll give you a brief summary of how this started, but being the chair of the Parks and Rec Board, Eddie and I meet on a pretty regular basis. And I went into Eddie's office one day and I said, "You know, something's got to be done with the Johnny Caw statue. It's been on my mind since we were on the city commission." And Eddie relayed to me, he said, now that he has this new office with this grand view of the city park now, and he related to me that every day there are groups of people that come to the Johnny Caw site and take photos. Families, visitors to town, you name it. But it's like one of the photo ops centers of Manhattan. But unfortunately, Johnny Caw just sits there or stands there on this raw piece of dirt. Hasn't been improved, that site itself, since it was built back in 1966. So maybe it was time to enhance that site because there is a legend of Johnny Caw in this book, and I'm sure you've all read this book and know all the different legends of Johnny. But he has done some wonderful things for our area. And so it seemed appropriate that we would do something with that site. Well, what would we do? And with Eddie's support from the beginning and the fact that we wanted to make sure this fit into the park master plan for the city park. And we're in the process, as you know, of upgrading and renewing that master plan for the city park. So if we were going to jump into a project with Johnny Caw, it had to be a part of that. And working with Eddie and his crew and his team, we have worked within those guidelines all along. So we started... I guess I made a couple of calls and we had to have an architect and we had to have someone that would oversee the construction. And those were the two primary elements in this. And, you know, guess what? Reach out to... You know, Bruce is like Mr. Historian in town as far as projects. And it's... I don't know how many projects he's been involved in and he usually gives his time to those projects. Really incredible what he does for us. And Bruce said, "Yeah, I'll take on Johnny Caw." And so he became a partner, Bruce McMillan and McMillan Architects. And then McAllen Gordon does a lot of work in this community now. Came from Kansas City, has an office here in town. And I called them up and said, "Hey, guys, would you be willing to help us with this project? Maybe give back to the community?" Because they are in the community. They're getting a lot of jobs. They're getting a lot of work. And guess what? A young man here, Todd Knight, stepped up and said, "We're in." Didn't take much time at all. And so we had our basis of our committee. And then I made some calls around and we actually end up, I think we have 16 individuals involved on this committee and all people that really have a vested interest in the community. And we have been working diligently along with the city to make this project happen. And this all occurred now in less than a year's time. So that's pretty incredible that we can make that happen. But let's look at the design and what we're really looking at doing. So the... Do I go up or down? Down? Okay. Okay, the design of the project, I'm going to ask Bruce to come in and that's pretty hard to see anyway. So Bruce, would you step up and talk about the design and your involvement?
Mayor, commissioners, Bruce McMillan, 555 Points Avenue, Manhattan, as well as Garrick Baker with our office, who has done really all the work on this. And I get to stand here and talk with you about it, however. But also, I'd like to acknowledge, as Commissioner Dawson mentioned, Roger Schultz also built a house for me at one point in time. And it was a very good experience and we appreciated that very, very much as well. The concept, and I'm going to go back just a... How do I do this right? Hey, I did that wrong. What do you know? And then I'm going to let Garrick actually walk you through what is in your packet briefly so that if there's some questions there, that we can get those answered. Obviously, as Ed indicated, we were asked if we would come forward on this. We have a long history working with the Parks and Recreation Department particularly. We have appreciated that immensely and have continued to work with Parks and Rec on this particular project. The actual concept came through Parks and Recreation. I believe Wyatt actually helped with much of the development of the concept as it stands right now. And we partnered very willingly with that process. We have had these submitted to city code services and those comments have been generated and have been incorporated into the project as well. And as we discussed even yesterday in the latest meeting with members of the group that has been facilitating this process, we will, our firm, will work through the entire construction process. We will actually inspect the construction just as we would on any other project for the city, as we've done for the auditorium, as we have done for the lobby, for the veterans organization and so forth. So I wanted to just assure the commission at that point that we will work hand in hand with the city on the project, just as we would on any other project for the city. And then I would like to turn this over to Garrick and let him walk you through the particulars of the project. And you might want to follow along in your packet of information as well.
If you give me just a minute, we can go to another...
PDF or...
Yeah, we can go to another.
I can work with the PDF.
You?
Yep, okay. Hold on. We can't see it. As Bruce had mentioned, my name is Garrick Baker. I'll see if... There we go. As Bruce had mentioned, these drawings are within your packet, so as it's hard to read up there. The main concept came from one of the legends that Johnny Caw created, the sunflower. So of course, the big outstanding aspect of it is the sunflower plaza. There are equal-sized petals that will be yellow in color, whether those are stained or integral color. We're still working through those details now. But they will be radiating out throughout Johnny's feet and be approximately 27 to 30 feet in diameter all the way out there. So it will be a sizable plaza out there. And directly in front of his feet, there will be a small outcropping for limestone blocks so that people can go up there, they can sit, they can go and stand and have their pictures taken in front of Johnny. In the northwest corner, as we're talking about ADA improvements, the sidewalk that will be leading back towards the playground will be ADA accessible. And then it will lead into the plaza. The plaza itself will not be more than 30 inches above grade. That way then we can maintain a 30-inch handrail instead of a guardrail so we obstruct the view, which may be a little bit difficult to see down here. So we will try and not obstruct the view of Johnny as much as we can there by maintaining that 30-inch rise there. Moving further around, we do have the stairs leading down to approximately 17 limestone blocks that will be used for seating and just lounging around in the neighborhood there. Moving to the northeast corner, we are anticipating that city staff will in the future, as part of that master plan, extend that sidewalk over to the sidewalk along 11th Street there. So we're leaving this as an open connection through there that will be able to accommodate an ADA accessible sidewalk that connects there so that you can have complete access going from 11th Street all the way into the playground and the parking lot over here. There will be new lighting, which Arasim Skolora here in Manhattan has donated all their time to go through and do the MEP drawings on those. They have uplighting for Johnny so that he can be visible at night and still stand tall as that icon. We will also have four pole lights that surround the plaza that will hopefully resemble the rest of the pole lights within city park so that it actually ties in and has that cohesive look to it. Would also like to acknowledge Dudley Williams and Associates out of Wichita. They have also donated their time in helping to design all of the retaining structure as this is kind of a large plaza out there. The face of the plaza will also incorporate a four-inch limestone veneer. We will also have a decorative railing that goes all the way around it, again, not to exceed that 30 inches so we don't have to go up to the 40-inch guardrail. And then we will also have informational panels around Johnny's feet. We're planning on four of them right now as well as donor plaques. Again, that's really hard to see around the shrubs there. We will also have limestone pavers that go up through Johnny's feet so you can still have that interactive experience. We're not trying to close people off. You can still go and climb on Johnny himself. And then as the final piece to the puzzle, Johnny will be also receiving some much-needed upgrades and attention after all of this time.
Can you just, for the people who are watching this on TV, can you go back to slide one?
Yes.
And then maybe just in quick fashion?
Yep.
Point out some of those attributes, the stairs, the panels and...
The stairs do not directly show an accurate representation as to what we have on the technical drawings right now. We do have this going all the way through, so if a class takes a field trip down there, they can all take a picture together. But we will have those handrails that go all the way around and leading up the stairs. The large plaza, again, will have the sunflower pattern and then the limestone seating in front of Johnny, as well as down below. This does not show the pole lights and then uplighting, of course, but...
And the panels?
The panels are not shown in this one, but we're currently working on designs to include more sunflowers or wheat or tall grass of some sort that will actually tie in with the Johnny Caw story.
So I just have, sorry, I just have a couple of questions. I think the design is very, very beautiful. I think it'll, well, that area looks better with this picture. But I also teach first grade in elementary school and I can see lots of things, especially being so close to a playground. A lot of the children that, they don't walk, they just run.
Yep.
So I was wondering when this is, when this comes to fruition, the types of materials such as concrete or even the rails. I can see lots of kids just trying to jump through those rails. And if those, all of those things would be considered, otherwise I can see a lot of lawsuits coming our direction.
I have a six-year-old nephew who loves to run everywhere as well, so this has been the front of my mind as well. So we have been exploring the different types of panels to keep kids from going through there. They won't get through there, but if they do, it's still only 30 inches off the ground. So there's also the bottom rails or on the railing, so that they can't climb through there or under it as well.
When Eddie, you know, later on Eddie can cover this, but when Eddie walked us through this the other day, they, for all the parks, they've got requirements for pinch points, for sizes of holes so kids can't get either their head or their hands caught. So the artist rendering doesn't show the panels being blocked in. That's, that's why those panels are there, so the kids can't jump through.
How far in front of the current Johnny Caw will the stone seating, will it go way into that depression there? Or is it like halfway into it? Or just down at the bottom of the little slope there in front of Johnny? I can't tell, is all.
Sorry. Just as the land starts to slope, that is about where the stairs will start.
Where the stairs?
The outcropping to where the concrete sunflower will start is about 12 to 15 feet right now. And then the exterior of that will be 27 to 30 feet in there.
So it'll help fill in that depression? Okay. Do we still, and if it gets water in it, it won't damage anything because they're stones, right? Are we...
There's doubt.
Yeah. So if the water, it's not going to damage anything that we've invested in? Okay.
Thank you. A few notes that I did forget to mention. Both of these have gone to Code Services and they have reviewed those. They said that they will not be issuing a building permit on this one, but they will have an electrical permit. They have also gone to city staff and we have received their comments back and we'll work on implementing those. So we will have coordination with our offices with the Forest Department and Parks and Rec, so that we get all the irrigation and everything tied into that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Looks like it. Is, okay, here comes Todd.
Good evening. Todd Knight, 1840 Grand Vista Lane, also with McCowen Gordon Construction. We have the opportunity to join this committee and lend a hand, and what a wonderful opportunity it is to continue our relationship with the city. We have, of course, been involved with your museum downtown and your upcoming recreation centers. Wanted to talk through tonight, really, kind of the support that we've received. And we really double down on the in-kind services that we requested on this project, more so than even the fundraising and actual cash in hand efforts. Some of the in-kind promotional support that we've received, of course, advertising and marketing, and this is in concert with the city staff. We've engaged a lot of folks on the city staff to lend a hand on promotional items and different things, to make sure it was all in, put out there in the right way, of course. We've, we've got signage. In fact, at Johnny's feet, you see a sign promoting the project. We've got the book reproduction that Ed showed earlier that is allowing us to do some fundraising components. We've got club memberships that Wynn is leading for us and helping get folks engaged in the actual Johnny Caw Club itself. And then we've got bobbleheads and radio promotions and events and all kinds of things to generate all types of support and interest in this project. We've got, and Ed, I don't want to steal any of your thunder if you want to speak up on any of these components, but we right now have a fundraising goal of roughly $75,000. So that is technically the cost of this project. Now the value is something that is significantly higher than that, based on the in-kind services that are going to be provided by local contracting companies and vendors. So right now we are, we've got roughly about $60,000 raised with another $15,000 to go. And we, we believe that is well within reach and should be accomplished here very soon. These are kind of some of the folks that we've engaged in the process and we wanted to really highlight some of these folks just generally because of their involvement and their history in the community. Of course, we've got Bruce McMillan Architects on the design side, McCowen Gordon on the construction management and supervision side. And then when we talk about labor and support and materials, this is where the rest of the community really has stepped up. We've got Flint Hills Job Corps, who's going to lend a hand on adding labor services to our construction crews. Materials testing, this is one thing that, similar to Bruce's inspections of the project, we would have materials testing, much like you would have on any type of infrastructure improvement. Construction staking, we're going to look for somebody to provide that for us. We've got Tri-City Fence lending a hand on the fencing, Better Construction on the earthwork. The City of Manhattan is lending a hand on the landscaping components and we're working with Eddie on that to make sure that we're doing that in the most cost-effective manner we possibly can. US Stone is lending a hand on some stone seats and pavers that you asked about earlier. The reinforcing steel for the concrete itself, we are going to, we're working to find a supplier for that. Midwest Concrete also, much like the Qantas project, is lending a hand on the Johnny Caw improvement. Colty Construction has stepped up on the labor side for the concrete, Perfection Masonry, Steel and Pipe Supply. We've also engaged MATC, wonderful opportunity to create a partnership with the local community college on the fabrication of the guardrails and decorative panels. We've got some donor plaques that Thomas Signs, Thomas Outdoor, excuse me, is going to be providing. Economy Electric on the electrical package. Lighting, we're working through right now. West Star has stepped up for the power service to bring power to Johnny, to provide power for all the lighting. And we've got charging stations that, next to each of those blocks that are right at Johnny's feet, you can sit down as mom's watching the kiddos play at the park nearby, they can charge their cellphone. So another little amenity that we thought of would be a great improvement for the area. So as far as supervision and management, this is where we want to ease your minds to make sure that you're going to get a good quality project. And McCowen Gordon Construction is prepared to serve as your representative for the management of this project. So we intend to provide these services listed here, from scheduling and coordinating the contractors, to tracking materials to make sure they arrive to the project site on time, supervise the project from start to finish. If work is happening on site, we will have representation on site, making sure that the work is put in place in a quality manner. We would lead the team meetings, we would manage the cost, we would monitor and analyze, like I said, all the work put in place. We would make sure that all the quality control components are going to be completed. And this is where we kind of start talking about the fundraising efforts. And one of the components that we talked, or that Bill mentioned earlier, was having the donations deposited into the city account for control of those funds. The way we would typically handle that on a project like this, we would receive the invoices from the vendors, confirm that that material has in fact been delivered to the site, it's exactly what was requested and purchased. And then we would take that invoice and slide it across the table to city staff to pay out of those funds. And we would make that recommendation, along with Bruce. He also would co-sign that invoice to assure that it meets both of our expectations. We would coordinate the inspections, materials testing, and then ultimately provide project status summaries along the way. So some, some of the items that we wanted to touch on tonight were those six requirements that were outlined by Bill earlier, city approval of plans, you heard how that process is absolutely going to be accomplished. The inspections on the construction, that will also be accomplished. The bonds are where it gets a little bit sticky, because when a vendor or a construction company is willing to offer services for significantly less than the value, it's somewhat difficult to go around then and require them contractually to meet different expectations or requirements. So that bond is typically tied to a contract, which is typically the same value as the bond. So if that makes any sense, that's where I believe that we could look at the cost versus the value, because I don't think you intend to enter into a contract agreement that's over $200,000 with anybody. That wouldn't make any sense, because you only have to pay out $70,000, which those dollars would be in city control. So that would be something worth further discussion. Insurance, we absolutely would require anybody that steps foot on the project site to be insured and have that proof of insurance in place. The donations, again, would be provided to the city and they would have that, those funds in place before we would ever start construction. And then if we could avoid the statutory bond, that would be a great win for this project to be able to move forward fairly quickly. So, anything to add? Any questions I can answer? No? Very good.
Thank you very much, Todd.
You bet.
Okay.
Let me make some closing comments.
Sure.
You see the Flag Plaza up there? And I was involved in the Flag Plaza project. I guess I learned how to do these projects through the Flag Plaza. And that project was back in 2011. And I want to read back for you, this came from our Parks and Rec Director at the time, and that was Kurt Laup. And this is a memo that he, he wrote, and we used the Flag Plaza as a model for this project, because we'd been there and done that. And one of the things in this memo, Kurt writes, acting as construction manager, Mark, and Mark at that time was Mark Oberhelmen from Trinium Construction. So they were serving the role as McCowen Gordon is doing today. Mark will clarify the donation section and solicit quotes for work from multiple subcontractors, which we have done. Dan, Dan is Dan Crouch from BBN. They were the architect on that particular project. And Dan is adding details to the drawing and refining information needed on the plans. Nick, Nick is Nick Arena, used to be city staff, right, Ron? And Nick is creating a contract for Mark to use with each subcontractor, which we can certainly follow that, as well as we've discussed that. And I, Kurt, am defining the city's role and obtaining pricing for materials associated with that role. And what that was, the city was going to help with landscape and also some irrigation issues with the Flag Plaza. So we use that as our model, and hopefully that model can be reaffirmed for this project as well. I might go back. Johnny Caw was a product of a professor at Kansas State University back in 1955, which was our centennial, and his name is George Fillinger. And he also had a partner at Kansas State who helped with the actual design of Johnny Caw, and his name was Elmer Tomasz. And they led this campaign. Johnny Caw, the statue itself, was built with $7,000 of donations from the community. So really copying exactly what was done in the early stages of building the Johnny Caw statue here. So that project, by the way, I wanted to go back on the Flag Plaza, was $152,000. However, the actual cost, as Todd was relating, was $52,000 that we collected, and that was the actual cash value of that project. So with that, that's our presentation. We certainly would answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ed.
I have one more slide, Izal. And again, a discussion item tonight, it's not an action item. We're just looking for direction from the commission, if the commission is supportive of option one, two, or commission customize option three for that Bluemont Hill scenic overlook project. And again, as I stated, the Qantas have a general contractor that is willing to enter into a contract with the city. So I think we have a much simpler project with the Bluemont Hill. The alterations of our process are simply that we're not using a bidding process, we did not use a standard selection process. Katie, am I on the right track there? So that's the alterations to our standard process for a project and would require the commission to take some action on that alternative process for that project. The Johnny Caw project, yes, is a little bit more complex. And you heard a lot of ways potentially the project could occur. There has to be a lot of discussion yet with the Johnny Caw Committee, but we're looking for direction if the commission is supportive of us working with the Johnny Caw Committee and bringing back to you at a later time what an alternative process would be. So that's, that's the point of discussion tonight.
I'm supportive of both, and I think, you know, you, you, you're going to have to help decide which one is applicable to which one, and that's for you to give best guidance on.
Yeah. I have a few questions. So when I was reading through this packet on Sunday night, I got to see and I was excited. These are great projects, no brainers, have a ton of community support. And then after about a page in, I thought to myself, I can't afford to go to law school, but if we keep getting packets written like this, I might have to start saving up, because it's incredibly complicated. So I guess my general question is, if you want us to provide you direction on which one, option one or option two, from what I understand, Qantas would do option one, correct? Because they have a legal entity and they're under 70,000, I mean, under 100,000.
Yes, it sounds like it. That's different than I understood, but it sounds like they've got a general contractor that we can contract with. All we need is input from you as to those five or six different things that, that basically are discretionary with you.
Got it. And then the Johnny Caw project would have to be option two, because they do not have a legal entity.
Yeah. If I'm hearing what Todd said correctly, and you correct me if I'm wrong, there are several contracts we can enter into related to that. One, I think we've got a contract with Bruce to design and do some inspection, perhaps. And I don't know what he's charging for that, but it sounded like there's no funds involved there. We have a contract with McCowen Gordon to do some construction management and to identify subcontractors with which the city would then contract to perform services. And again, all of those contracts are either zero or some discounted fee, none of which exceed $100,000. And if I understand it correctly, the total wouldn't exceed 100,000.
So our packet, when it says $260,000?
I'm guessing they're including value in there rather than cost.
And that is not being us ambiguous with the law. There's a lot of state statues I'd love to challenge, but this isn't particularly one of them.
Katie can weigh in on this, but I'm, I'm comfortable in saying that statute is, is intended to protect the city and the suppliers from liens being attached for costs incurred. It's not related to the value that's being received. So... Katie can weigh in on this, but I'm comfortable in saying that statute is intended to protect the city and the suppliers from liens being attached for costs incurred. It's not related to the value that's being received. So, if the cost being incurred doesn't exceed 100,000 in total, then the statutory bond isn't required.
But if we get halfway through the project and something happens and they don't complete it, then the city is going to have a cost to complete it.
Well, that's a different, that's a different bond. That's a performance bond situation.
So, this is what I'm talking about, this law school stuff?
If it's not completed, we've, we've got a contract with a subcontractor to do a specific job. If, at a, at a zero or some discounted price, if they don't complete the project, our contract is going to make payments out as things are completed. If it doesn't get completed, we're going to get out of that contract and contract with somebody else and use the balance of the funds.
Katie, do you, do you agree with that? All of that?
So, so, it's, Johnny Call is more complicated, because it's going to entail numerous different contractual relationships, but they're all contractual relationships, I think we understand and can put together, and they wouldn't require the statutory bond. I don't know, or I suspect you don't need a performance bond, so it's whether or not those other things. I'm assuming we're probably going to have plan approval, we're going to have inspections, insurance.
Yeah.
Insurance with the, with the contractors that we're dealing with.
Yeah, go to the legal concern slide.
Okay. There we go. So, one of the ones we have to identify is whether or not we're going to require the funds be deposited with the city on hand before you enter into contracts and so on.
Okay. What I have to say about this slide is, obviously, one and two are priorities on both projects, and it sounds like it's already happening, so that's not a big deal. Performance bonds, I'm comfortable with leaving off. Insurance is a must, but again, it sounds like both of those things are happening with each deal. Five, I, I kind of want to go with the recommendation of what city staff feels the most comfortable with. I don't know enough about the internal buying mechanisms that we do to be able to give you a great opinion on the direction of that. And number six, I just want to make sure that even if, I just want to make sure that even if the, those in-kind contributions do not cost of the total, do not count into the total project costs, and if they don't, then I feel comfortable not issuing a statutory bond. But obviously, like, if there is even a little bit of ambiguity, I can't even say the word, if there's a little bit of gray area there, I would rather have the bond than not. Again, I don't particularly want to challenge state statutes. So, if you're confident in that legal opinion, then I trust you on that, but if you're not, then I want to see the bond issued.
I just want to add that we haven't seen an itemization of, the legal department hasn't seen an itemization of how all the in-kind services and the actual costs, and so we're making the assumption that there, it's a true cost representation, and depending on how it shakes out, potentially the cost, if it is greater than that, we're going to go back to Bill's position. And then also, I would just point out that, in Bill's statement, that if we have subcontracts that are in-kind donations and they fail to perform, we can break that contract, but it may be city, we may not be able to find someone to donate those services if, this is a worst-case scenario, I'm just, so that's where we'd have to use those donated funds in the event we can't get a donation to replace, replace that, or use city funds for that.
In lieu of performance bonds on both projects, I think it would help, as you were saying, if things were itemized out, just so we know if a relationship with the subcontractor does break, we know how much the city would be on the hook for. And I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence as a city. I support both of these projects, they're great projects, but I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence here, if we're going to be entering any legal contracts with anybody. So, that's, did you get enough information from me? Do you have any? Okay.
Of course, I know a lot about the Johnny Call project, as Commissioner Dodson said, because I've looked at all the details. But, you know, the big picture, as I look at this and I look at the options, we won't lose sight of the fact that, you know, we've got people in the city that have donated large amounts and small amounts to both of these projects, and what we want to do is keep the cost as low as possible. And I know we've got all these concerns that somebody's going to default, but again, look at the list of the folks that are donating. I mean, we've got, these are all people, part of our community, they're not going to, I'm fully confident they're not going to leave us holding the bag. And so, for that reason, you know, I'm not concerned about performance bonds. I think that if, you know, these people have come through. I mean, they're your, they're your friends, neighbors, they're stepping up, we've worked with them for years. And so, I just don't see a problem with that. The, I don't want to violate any Kansas laws. So, the idea of the, you know, the statute, if, if it is, you know, a number of 100,000, if it's over that, then we'd have to do it. But, the Kiwanis project is not, so that's, you know, not a problem. And if the Johnny Call project is just going to be based on actual dollars, then it would only be like 70,000, and so I think that would work also. So, the way I understand all the legal things here, we probably have to go with, you know, the third option, which is, you know, we do an alternative to our charter ordinance. And then, your list of six things, we do all of them except maybe three and four.
Let me make sure you understand what I mean by a performance bond. The performance bond is something that the, in, in the case of the general contractor with, with the Bluemont project and the subs with, what I call subs, they're actually going to be direct contracts with us, but it's something those people provide us in case they stop in the middle of the project and it isn't completed, we have funds to complete it. Whether or not you want that is, is up to you. That, that probably is the least important. What you referred to is, is we've got lots of folks that have donated money and they're going to come through. That really relates to number five, whether or not we're going to have the funds on hand here before we enter into those contracts. If you don't have those funds on hand, we're, we're signing contracts saying we're going to pay subcontractors and others without the funds on hand, if you don't have the donated funds here. And that's okay, there's not a legal problem, as long as you understand.
I think, I think we should have the donated funds. I understand the performance bonds, you know, we had a couple of meetings about that, but again, I'm convinced that the people that have said, hey, I'm going to come pour the concrete and make the little sunflower are going to come through. They're not going to do it halfway.
No.
Okay, I'm a total optimist on that, and that's maybe strange for me, because many times I approach things pessimistically, but I'm totally optimistic on this, because I know the people that we're dealing with.
From my standpoint, that number three is the least important of the six that are up there.
So, so that's where I'm at on it. I think we, you know, we remove as many obstacles as we can, and we follow the law, of course.
No, I agree, the, the two projects there will do, I like to see community members come together and work on projects such as this, especially when they're self-initiated and not by the city. But because there is this legal statute we're trying to follow, you know, if both projects, one is anticipated to be valued at 260,000, but the funds are at 75,000, and the in-kind is supposedly going to take care of the rest of the, the value that we're speaking of. And then the one at, is it Bluemont, Bluemont Hill Scenic is 70,000. So, even if it says total funds is 75,000, it still seems like a very big project. We've been through enough projects here from city standpoint where there's lots of change orders all the time. So, what if that happens, and what it does, if it does come to that 100,000 and we haven't put ourselves there yet, what happens then?
I'm not sure I can stand here and answer that, because we have a contract, let me give you an example using Bluemont. We've got a contract with a general contractor that has a specific price in it of less than 100,000, which doesn't trigger the statutory bond. If you're suggesting that in the middle of that project, that general contractor comes forward and says, or the city, or somebody says, we want to add additional requirements of you to do some additional construction, and a change order comes forth that the total price now is over 100,000, I guess we would have to address that at the time, whether or not we then back up and say, well, as a part of the change order, you're going to have to provide a statutory bond, which may very well be what we would suggest at that time. The likelihood of that occurring in that type of project, I assume, is fairly small. You've got an identifiable project, and I don't know whether there are a possibility of changing things. You don't just change the cost simply because something changes. Something in the scope of the project would have to change before the cost would change. So...
Right. And I, and that's what I'm thinking. I don't remember exactly how much the Manhattan Sign cost that Phil Anderson worked on also, and what were the, if there was any change of orders or any kind of what they anticipated and how they ended up. But that's always, I know any projects we do on our house or anything of that sort, we go for this and it ends up being just a little bit more or something of that sort. So, will they, will this be a binding to where, like you said, it would have to be under a certain amount, so that we don't have to go into one of the other legal components of the options? It has to be valued exceeding, the total cost of the project exceeds 100,000, so there would be that limit of some kind, or that doesn't matter for the, for the Johnny Call one. I don't know if I made sense.
I'm assuming in both instances, we're going to have a fixed price for the services we're seeking. In the one case, it's general contractor doing the whole thing, in the other case, it's several, several contractors doing different things. And all of those contracts are going to have a specific not-to-exceed price.
One of the things that will make this a little easier is that, for the example on Johnny Call, there's a spreadsheet that's probably got 40 entries on it or so, and you'll be able to see the donation of material, the donation of time, and then, for example, if he says, I'm going to give you 80%, you just give me 20% of the value, that's what's in the cash price that comprises the 69 or 70,000. So, you'll be able to, at least, and I assume the same thing will happen in the, on the other project, that you'll be able to see what's donated versus cash value that the merchant expects to receive. That's, that's what will be in the bank or in the city account.
Yeah, I don't have, I think I'm comfortable with either one of the two options that you provided. I don't want to go into customizing our own option for this. It depends on whatever works best with the two organizations that we're working with. It seems, you know, one might be a little bit less challenging than the second one. But either way, I, I do trust our legal staff to do this in the best interest of the city and the community, and these projects are good for the community. And when there's good people that want to come up and make something happen for the betterment of Manhattan, for the city of Manhattan, I think we need to work with them on this, and I think that's what we're doing. I don't think we're doing this on purpose to put up any barriers, but we're also trying to be within that legal confinement that we have to be in as elected officials and as a local government. So, I'm not hardcore on any one of the options, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And whatever is brought to the city commission at that time, we can have further discussion and vote on one of those options.
I apologize, because the options that we've set forth in this scenario don't really fit with what we're talking about now.
Exactly.
We designed those with one understanding, and now with the proposals, they're something different. So, the options that we've asked you to pick don't really fit. I guess what I would ask for direction on, so that we can complete the projects, is, are you comfortable with the proposal that Bluemont made, which is entering into a contract for their general contractor with, with those, with those variables inserted? Are you comfortable with the proposal Johnny Call has submitted, which is several contracts with a construction manager, a designer, and individual, what I call subcontractors? Neither of those really fit into options one, two, and three. If they fit, they fit with three, those, those contracts with these requirements up here. That, that's the direction we need to prepare those documents to bring them back for approval.
Real quick, Mike, that, that Excel spreadsheet that you're talking about, so is, is that what you would provide to city staff in terms of an itemization?
Yeah, I mean, that's what they have to see in order to assess the cash.
I would just, I would love to see that as well, just, the only reason I bring this up is because when the Peace Memorial folks, who did an amazing job, raised a ton of money, had to come ask the city for money, the commission ran them through the wringer, and I just want to make sure that on either one of these projects, if an unforeseeable event happens and they have to ask for city support, we're not surprised by those costs, so that the same incident does not happen with what happened with Peace Memorial. So, I just want to make sure that we see that and we're all aware of what we're entering into. That's the only thing that I'm asking. I don't foresee those things happening, but life happens, and sometimes things unexpectedly happen, and I just want to make sure that we understand the implications of that.
I guess there can always be things that come up that aren't, aren't envisioned now, but if I'm understanding, what Commissioner Dodson has said, I agree that our contract, for instance, with, with subcontractor A that's going to pour concrete, that contract is going to have a fixed price in it, and perhaps for the contractor's purposes, it might also reference things that, a value of things that he's donating, so that he can use that for his own tax purposes, but that has no bearing on our position. It gives you a clear understanding of what the total cost might be if he fails to do something and we have to go get somebody else to do it.
But if no one else does it, the city's going to have to, that's what I'm saying. If we get halfway through a project and a subcontractor bails out, we cannot, we cannot find another subcontractor to fill in or donate that, and they cannot raise the money, the next event is to come ask the city, which I think this is all circumstantial and probably not likely, but again, we ran the Peace Memorial people through the wringer when they had to do it. So, I just think it's appropriate for us to do a little bit more due diligence upfront. That's all I'm asking.
Yes, I want to comment on that, because, you know, item five, basically, we're saying no construction until all the money's there. So, that, that limits the risk, and you brought up Peace Memorial, that's one that's irritated me. They didn't raise the money, they didn't have it all in the bank, and they came and asked the city for it, and the commission gave it to them. I don't intend to give any money to Johnny Call project or the Kiwanis project, just like I didn't want to give any to the Stage project. But I supported it, they, they said they were going to raise the money, they didn't. And then they came, they got taxpayer money, because the commission did it, which is fine, that was a decision that was made. But that's not where we're at on either of these projects. I don't want to confuse these projects with that one, because it's totally different, because these projects are going to follow item five, and the money's going to be in the bank before we start moving dirt.
But the money won't be in the bank for the in-kind services that are being donated, correct? So, my point's still the same.
Correct, and that's where the optimism comes in. I trust the folks that are doing it. I mean, they built our discovery center, they've done all kinds of projects in town, they're going to come through.
I'm, I'm optimistic as well that nothing will happen, but unforeseeable circumstances come up and we're paying with taxpayer money. We argue about the $10,000 travel budget, and both of these projects are substantial costs, and I just want to make sure that we're doing the due diligence upfront. That's all I'm asking.
I would like to ask a question about number four, that's insurance. Is that insurance for each of the subcontractors, or is that just insurance? It just says, it doesn't say what it means.
The contracts that we will enter into with the general over here and the various construction people over here, is essentially going to be the standard contract we would always enter into for public works projects. It's going to include a requirement that that contractor provide liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, all of the, all of the insurances to cover the liability that they might have.
So, the only criteria of the six that we would be willing to forego is number three, performance bond?
That's what I'm hearing.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Then in our packet...
Well, six doesn't apply.
Okay, that's a good point. All right. So, one of the questions you had in the material was whether to follow a traditional approach of the city entering into a contra, there was language in our materials about whether we would do a contra...
we would do a contract or a license. And we're talking about doing a contract method?
We're talking about doing our, pretty much our conventional contract in both projects.
Traditional contracts. Okay. That's all.
There'll be several over here and one over here.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, any further questions?
Just want to ask.
Okay. Who? Ask who? Eddie. Eddie, we have a question. The question is, do you have everything you need from us?
I'm sorry, yes, I think that we, and I'm going to listen to it again tomorrow morning as well.
It's changed throughout the evening.
The information we're after.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak with regard to this issue before we conclude? This is not an item we're voting on, it's asking the commissioners for direction. But if there are any other comments, please come forward. Seeing no one, I will close the meeting for the evening and adjourn. Thank you. Thank you very much.